Education, July 23, 2024 Work Session. Ms. Clark, please call the row.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Kovak? Calvo, I'm sorry.
Present. That was a combination between Coleman and Calvo.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Chair Green?
Present.
Commissioner Love?
Commissioner McKissick.
Commissioner McKissick.
Thank you, we do have a call.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. It is with heavy hearts that tonight's moment of silence is in remembrance of the family of Nor Nudin, a first grader at Shelby Oak, who was in an accident on the 23rd of June, the family of Board Member Johnson, and the family of Board Member McKissick. We want to keep both of those families in our thoughts and prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The question is now on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments, Dr. Fagin's?
Madam Chair, we do have amendments to the agenda. We would like to remove item 9.9, the contract approval for FlexPoint Education. And we will add item 9.23, contract approval for VPK Community Partners. Item 9.24, contract approval for Head Start Community Partners. And item 9.25, University of Memphis Campus School Master Agreement Termination and Release. And then finally, we would like to amend item 9.7, contract renewal comprehensive medical staffing. The overall dollar amount of $1.7 million is the same, but maximum health care is being removed, and the capacity of the remaining vendors will increase.
Commissioner Calvo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for maybe the General Counsel. There were two items on the agenda that was published yesterday, one regarding the University of Memphis and another one titled Reorganization Evaluation. Can you, can you tell me how, what is the process to remove items out of the agenda once it has been published?
Thank you, Ward, Calvo. The...
The Parliamentary will answer that question, if you don't mind. Thank you so much.
There's no problem removing him after, after it's published.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes, the contract... That the superintendent has just spoken of with registered nurses with the companies are very absorbent contracts. Are we going to keep the same number of people that we're going to employ through them, just through a different company, or what are you, what do you exactly? You are eliminating some company and increasing others, is that what I'm hearing?
So the company that we're removing does not have the capacity, they don't have the, the personnel to provide, and so we would have to increase the capacity for the remaining vendors to continue to meet the numbers that we need.
And this is just registered nurses?
These are nurses.
How many?
I can give that number for you, I don't want to give you a wrong number, but I can give the number for you.
It was on our platform, but there were so many vendors there, and there was a huge amount. I guess my real question was, because it came to something like $70,000 per nurse, and I still wonder if we could not hire our own nurses, instead of paying some company to make millions off of the $70,000 they're going to pay.
That's right, so that we don't have interrupted services right now, we'll continue this, but we are looking at the in-house model as that concerns.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
And we'll have more questions when you do your presentation tonight. Thank you. There are no further amendments to the agenda, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda and a second? Thank you, Commissioner McKissick and Commissioner Coleman. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Love?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
And Board Chair Green?
Aye. Thank you for the approval of the agenda. We are now on to the Chair's Report under my report this evening. I want to do a special thank you to the parents for supporting and encouraging 9,662 students to register for the Summer Learning Academy. Thank you also to the sponsors, employees, and community for supporting the first 100-day celebration. I'm sure we'll hear more about that later. I would like to encourage parents and students to take advantage of the Legacy School Supply Giveaway on August 3, 2024, at the Memphis Sports and Events Center located at 995 Early Maxwell Boulevard. Parents, remember the MSCS Summer Enrollment Registration Hub is open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we look forward to seeing you at our business meeting on next Tuesday, July 30, 2024, at 5:30. We are now on to the Superintendent's Report.
All right, good evening, everyone. This will be just a little lengthy, it's been quite some time that we've shared time together, but I'll be brief as possible to reserve time for questions. So we'll open up, we did have the 100-day event, seems like just yesterday, but we're now well past 100 days, so thankful that we've made it, we've been really accelerating the work now. We have an approved budget officially as of yesterday from the Shelby County Commission, and so the team has been really deep into the work. Thank you to everyone who did attend, we were able to share just some highlights from the transition report as we work to develop the strategic plan, to share with the board, receive their feedback, ensure the priorities that are necessary are continued to be represented. And so, thank you to everyone there, won't spend a lot of time there because we spent a lot of time there, literally. So, moving on to the Superintendent's Report for this evening, I just want to start out with, now that you have followed my 100 days, you can follow the 100 days of our senior leadership, you can visit the website, scsk12.org/seniorleaders, and each leader has their own 100-day plan as you look at the deeper parts of their respective roles. And so, under Transformation Office, you can follow along with the Departments of CTE, JROTC, Athletics, respectively, for each senior leader and their bodies of work. And so now, they will provide updates every two weeks, as I did, to allow the public to follow along and continue our commitment to transparency. For Summer Learning, as the Chair shared, we had several to enroll, but I wanted to give an update of where we landed. It's critical in terms of third grade retention, but overall, in terms of the number of students, we had across our elementary schools, there were 902 retained, this is across all grade levels elementary, and 505 enrolled. And of that, just giving you some, some quick notes here, of those who enrolled, the 505, there were no overage, but the retained students that did not attend were 397, and so we did have several to enroll, but 397 did not attend. Middle school, 753 students were retained, we had more to enroll, 1,034. These were promotional and overage for grade. Of those numbers that did not attend summer school, there were 216. High school students, there were 1,974 that were retained, 2737 enrolled. This is for courses that they did not succeed in, meaning they failed, and this is new coursework, so you can attend summer school and take new classes as well. And so, of the numbers that enrolled but did not attend, there were 968 of the 2737 enrolled that did not attend. The third grade required, and this is where the third grade retention law comes in, there were 981 students in grade three that were retained, 866 enrolled. We have 75 who did not attend, they have through July 26 to attend one of the makeup dates, or some of the makeup dates where they will be retained. And so, I want to continue our transparency here and sharing that we did have 9,000, nearly 10,000 students to register. Our average daily attendance hovered over 4,500, and then you can see the breakdown across our grade bands of who actually attended based on enrollment. As we think about returning to school, each week, I have principals to submit a school readiness survey, it has several questions on it. Schools are ranking themselves in terms of readiness from 1 to 4, 4 being they are ready, 1 meaning, you know, there's still some attention to be given to some areas. As you take a look at the screen, I'll just highlight some of our areas where we are doing very well, there's our safety precautions, our leadership roles have been established, we are 100% field, if you will, all schools have a principal, so we are excited about that, to be able to open our schools with a leader at the helm. Welcome back, staff meetings have been prepared and determined, current staff have been confirmed. We do still have vacancies, and I'll go over those shortly. Our areas of growth, our IEPs and 504 plans need attention, classroom setup certainly, teachers are not back just yet, and so that remains. We still have some opportunities for our mental health partners to reach out and support the events that are coming up there, so we have some gaps there. Instructional materials, everyone still doesn't have everything that they need just yet for the first day in their classrooms, those will be given out during in-service, which is coming up. And then school improvement plans are our campus excellence plans, those are due September the 1st, and so we still have some gaps there. But you're able to see the specific questions, the areas that they're looking at each week that they submit this, and then we push in to provide the supports, so that we ultimately land at least by the second week of school with all fours. With some of these, understandably, you can't actually have a four until sometime on the other side of back to school, but most of these, we do look pretty good as it concerns being ready, and then Board Members, you do have the full sheet in front of you, that gives you the exact questions and where they land. So we think about safety and security, and have asked the team to stretch out across the district, across all nine districts, safe routes, corridors, taking care of the vegetation on the sidewalks, cleaning that up, ensuring that we have officers that are visible on all corners. We do understand we have some restrictions in terms of not being a police force, but there's a lot of work that we can do. So in collaboration with the Memphis Police Department, certainly our Sheriff's Department, and then our own officers, we're able to stretch out just a bit more. This is taking care of parking lots, this is being just more visible in our communities, and then certainly having fresh spaces as we welcome students back in our schools. As we think about attempting to provide an officer without overpolicing our students, an officer, or at least a volunteer at all of our schools with more than 150 students, and so that is still in the works, but overall, you can see here that in combination or in tandem with these respective LEOs or law enforcement agencies, we are able to provide the level of visibility that we need across the Memphis Shelby County Schools District. Nope, just giving everybody a chance, I got a clicker, just giving everybody a chance to look. Good, okay. Custodial work, 94% of our schools are clean as of today. In progress, the only schools that still remain are some schools where construction has taken place, and we've generally not been able to accelerate the work there. We are and have gotten over our hump, if you will, with one of our vendors in terms of what that gap presented for us, and so schools with 70% or less completion, I've just listed those there for full transparency, but that work, I'm fully confident that will be fine for back to school. If you want to follow this, we have this posted at the website, scsk12.org/summerclean, so that you can also see our progress in this area. But we are confident, as the young man is giving the thumbs up, that we will be ready as well. Talent management, which is our greatest area that everyone has been watching, following along with and here, just wanted to provide some numbers and give some context that our work has not been in vain, the blitz is that, you've been able to see, several have attended. Thank you to the team who has just really done phenomenal with putting those together, sometimes overnight, we've had virtual sessions, certainly we've had national outreach and responses. Many have been thankful that they've been able to be in Florida and really sit in on an interview with our schools from Atlanta, and then certainly wherever they are for our virtual schools, we have, or for our virtual hiring blitzes. We did emphasize facility services and nutrition services just this past weekend, phenomenal showing there, we were able to give, I think, 143 offers, more than 200 people actually attended, and that was just for facility services and nutrition services. Overall, I'll give that blitz information just momentarily, but the number of instructional vacancies, when we landed in June, I shared we were at about 545. At one point, that peaked at about 554 vacancies. When we take a look at manager review, talent management review, and then the offers extended, we get about 360 here. Manager review and talent management review, one of those is central office, meaning they are the ones necessary at this point to push the individual through. The manager review is our principals, and so we'll provide some emphasis there for them to move their final candidates along, and so we have individuals who are identified for nearly half of our, more than half of our vacancies, the offers extended, meaning those individuals have already made it to receiving a recommendation are 101, and so our true vacancies, if we put all of these numbers together, instructionally are 185. Of those 185, about 84 of those are exceptional education, special education, and 31 of those are English Language Arts. Another 26 of those, if my numbers are correct, are English as a second language. Those are our highest opportunity areas, I have reached out to our State Board Members, Cobbins and Jensen, as well as the State Commissioner Reynolds, to solicit an exception and some deeper supports to provide our needs for exceptional education, as it is the one area, content area, that is not allowed for our permit pathway, meaning that an individual that is interested in that area cannot be enrolled in an educator preparation program and receive a permit and go along the three years that the state provides in other areas. So we have asked for that exception to be given and an issuance of a temporary certificate or certificate for this year, as we work to get our feet beneath us, as that is the heaviest area, and there are no workarounds currently for it. The other areas, English as a second language, and our mathematics and ELA, we are still looking for, for individuals there, and we have a few additional opportunities that we are hopeful that we can get some interest. As of June, we left with 405 non-instructional vacancies, so think about graduation coaches, attendance liaison, instructional coaches, we've made 193 recommendations, 55 offers extended, so combining those two, we have about 157 vacancies here. These are still school psychologists, those hard-to-staff areas, and so all of this is a concern, but these are our non-instructional vacancies across the district. Nearly 1,000 individuals have attended all of our hiring blitzes, so we've gotten great participation and attendance, the number of recommendations, 417, and so we've been able to make some good offers here across these particular position types, as I've shared on the previous slide, so good work here, we do have some more that are coming up. We will dedicate the next one to our soup schools, that's more than half of the district. Remember, these are schools that have been designated by the state to have a grade letter of D or F. We have a few vacancies, and so the priorities of the priority would be our soup schools. If we can get most of those vacancy staff, we'll consider that a big win. We are dedicating a specific hiring focus to our troops to teachers, and so we have veterans here, folks who have moved to Memphis to serve, and they've served the country, they've served in Memphis, and now to take care of our veterans and their spouses who move as well multiple times. There are about 433, I think, who we will be able to speak with and share many of our opportunities with, and hopefully bring on board to Memphis Shelby County Schools, asking them to now help move Memphis as they have already moved here to serve in general. So those are, that is Friday, with our soup schools being this Thursday, looking forward to, to the turnout there. So to ensure everyone is ready on day one, that students and families, we've held two of our three virtual sessions, giving out a lot of healthy information, if you will, that families have found very beneficial. Our next one is tomorrow, our first two, we've seen more than 1,500 attendees who have been very engaged, asking some really good questions that have helped us round out some of our edges, if you will, get into some, some gaps where they might exist. But overall, we've been able to provide a level of information that our families have found very beneficial. That information is already online, certainly you can still join us tomorrow, and we hope that you do at 5:00 p.m., but certainly you can go and watch it live, or go watch a playback of one of the presentations, and you can see all of the information already at scsk12.org/backtoschool. We have registration hubs, and I do want to share that I, I understand as someone who's done this for a little while, that why are we registering if my child is going to the same school next year, right? Why do we have to do that over and over and over again? So I want to emphasize that I did have the team to roll us over, so our students are rolled over, they're already enrolled with Memphis Shelby County Schools, I think we're sitting still over our 110,000 students, and so we're, we're, we're good there in terms of enrollment. What we're asking families to do is to confirm and verify contact information, which is most important, and where you might need immunizations or any of that critical information to be enrolled, this is the opportunity to go ahead and get that done before August 5, which is day one, and so we've set up these hubs. We've already had our first one at Raleigh, in the Raleigh area last Friday, we were able to get about 50 or so students and families, several of them new, to be enrolled in the district. We've operated this, Chair Green, I think, showed up at the one on, on yesterday, and, and supported the enrollment efforts there, and this is every day from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the locations that are listed on the screen here. We have added one this Friday for, in the North Haven Elementary School for our unincorporated Shelby County area and North Memphis area, in addition to the one that was previously scheduled already at Liberty Pocket Park. And again, all of this information is online, but we wanted to provide it here and share out. It's up to you.
Have questions? We can answer them. You want to stop? Okay.
Related to this, so I had a quick question. I've had a few community members reach out about, there's a process for newcomer students who need a PIN number, who, there's a step that the district has to take in order to be able to enroll. Who is managing that process, and how can we get our newcomer students enrolled? Or can someone follow up with?
Let me get you the, the exact name, because what we placed was a general, you know, student services email, so I'll get exact names, so we can make that.
Okay, I think we, from what I've heard, we have about 100 students who are wanting to enroll, so I wanted to make sure they, they join us, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Love?
The previous slide, did you, um, no, the slide?
What's your question?
Did you ever get that situated? The principals hired the pre-K teachers, but they don't answer to the principals. Did you ever get that squared away?
Yes, ma'am, all squared away. All, 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 all things are aligned. You haven't heard anything else, right?
No.
Commissioner Calvo? And then Williams?
Madam Superintendent, on this registration hubs, you said this, this are going to be weekly from now until, like, I mean, this week and next week? Okay, got it, thanks.
And if we see a need to continue, certainly we'll extend it, but definitely through the, through August, what is that, 2nd, that Friday?
And I want to second that, I, that, I think with the PIN, because with many foreign students, they, you know, they're...
The PIN number.
Right, thank you.
Turn your mic on. Can we be sure, I mean, is there a certainty that we will open school up with a teacher in every classroom?
What's your question, Commissioner Williams?
Will we open schools this year on the first day with a teacher in every classroom?
Certified teacher?
Yes.
Is that the goal, yes? Is that where we are right now, no? Will someone be in every classroom, yes?
The other question that I have with you is that, the curriculum that will be in front of children on the first day of school from every group, whether it's the soup school or the highest performing schools, is that in place? Will that be in place on the first day?
Which part?
The curriculum from which the children will be taught?
Yes, sir.
And will learn. Will it be in place on the first day of school?
Absolutely, I look forward to this question from you each time, yes, sir.
Well, it's a different question, the same answer.
I love it.
Let me ask you my final question, and that is, several teachers have come to me, the state does allocate $300 a year for teachers for, for supplies.
Yes, sir.
And the problem we have against Shelby County Schools is that the teachers get it, but guess what they get it as? A credit card to one of the vendors in the city, and they all must go to that same vendor. Is that a problem with the district for doing so? Is that some kind of kickback we're getting there, or why would we do that, instead of giving them the $300 to shop where they could get the best value?
Now, Commissioner Williams, if you learn of someone getting a kickback, you make sure you report that.
I don't know why the district would ask...
We have an internal audit for that, okay?
Then why would they be told to shop at one place? And that's where the credit for the district is extended, and that place is the highest vendor in the city?
Yes, sir, we've had healthy dialogue about that, and what I committed to you is that we were doing several things. One, we were in the process of doing that business, expanding or doing the application process for Amazon, that was one. Two, expanding our vendor list so that teachers are clear about where they can shop, although they can right now purchase from anywhere. I think there are some opportunities at the school level where the, the reimbursement process is not really wanting to be followed, if you will, it's easier to go to Knowledge Tree, I'll, I'll just say that transparently, and so we are working to expand that vendor list in a very transparent way, so that it's understood they can go and use their dollars where they would like to, while also getting the Amazon business partnership as well.
So is that a yes or no?
Will they use their money at Knowledge Tree?
As they wish.
They can currently do that, yes, sir.
No, they cannot currently do that.
Yes, they can.
Last year, they, teachers in this district had to purchase or spend the $300 at a Knowledge Tree.
I think that in previous history, and I don't want to speak to it because I wasn't here, but I will share that perhaps that was the expectation, but not the only opportunity, if you will, in terms of vendor, they can spend their funds where they like.
So am I understanding you to say that it will not be required to be spent at Knowledge Tree?
That is exactly it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Garcia?
I was just gonna say, I actually have had a couple of teachers reach out saying, "Thanks for allowing us to spend our money anywhere." So I think that has changed, I think the thing that we need to make sure is financial secretaries or whoever's communicating at the school level have communicated that that is now the policy, and that making sure all 300 does go to the teacher, not for collective supply use, but yes. Yeah, I think that was the change made, so.
Yes, when you lifted it the last, I think you lifted it in May or so, and I immediately...
Was it a budget question?
I, I just want to add a little context, whereas I'm glad that a change has been made, but it's not to completely pile on to Knowledge Tree, but they have been a vendor locally owned for decades in this community, and they've opened their doors and had free teacher giveaways for many, many, many years, so I just want to make, put that out there. It hasn't been just this, so just want to make that clear. Thank you.
And I agree, as a, as a former educator, they were one of the largest suppliers in the city where you could go and buy and get what you needed, and so I think that's why so many teachers enjoy shopping there, but we appreciate that partnership. All right, Sue, it's back to you.
So we're just emphasizing, and we'll continue to emphasize, but I wanted to bring this particular visual, and I hope it's clear to at least those who are in the room, but this is online as well. When we think about attendance, a lot is always shared, especially I can remember in the classroom, it's just 10 minutes, you know, it's just one day, it's just, you know, a couple of days, and I wanted to just share what that adds up to, not just in one year, but over the course of the 12 or 13 years of a student's experience, when we think about proficiency and reading on grade level, and, and how we predict or can predict pretty close, closely and accurately who will, will drop out of high school. And so, if you're looking at, if your child misses, if a student misses just one day every two weeks, that is 20 days a year, that is four weeks per year, and that's nearly one and a half years over the course of 13 years. If we look at three days per week, that's 120 days a year, that's 24 weeks a year, and that's almost eight years of the 13 years that a student is in school. If you just talk about minutes, just 10 minutes late, right? That won't affect me. 10 minutes a day is 50 minutes a week, it's nearly one and a half weeks per year, that's nearly a half year just off of 10 minutes per day. If we look at one hour per day, and that's typically a class, at least in the middle high school level for sure, but just one hour per day is one day per week, that's three weeks per year, and that equals and equates to over two and a half years out of 13 years. And so, when we look at this information... And so, when we look at this information, when I say that a lot is at stake, when this, when the urgency that we speak about, it's not about chronic absenteeism, it is literally about what is on the line when you're not in school, right? And so, it impacts all of us for sure, but when we think about our outcomes and what we're seeing, 78% of our students are not currently reading proficiently on grade level, another 83% are not performing proficiently right now. In math, this is what it boils down to. And so, when individuals and researchers and folks are making decisions about policies, when we think about the impact, especially on a district such as ours, Memphis Shelby County Schools, when we think about what that looks like for determining retention for third grade, when we think about what that looks like at looking at sixth grade and the transition in those who don't, we know who can turn into dropouts. And so, we just want to emphasize the attendance, but more importantly, we want to emphasize what we're doing about it. And so, Come to Win is our initiative. You want to pause there?
I think you're right on track. I said, what are we going to do to educate families? I mean, I would love to see that sheet of paper go out to every single student.
It will, day one. So, it's a part of the ready day one presentation that I do, the virtual sessions. It will also be a part of day one at every school. It will also show up as a big banner. You can only walk in and see it every day. In terms of the reminders alongside our Come to Win, just really making sense of, it's not just we're harassing people about coming to school, like a lot is on the line. I think you have a question.
No, I just, our Director of Literacy will probably enforce this, but parents also get that, what 20 minutes of reading a day does, that same applies, right? That there are positive impacts of just spending 20 minutes, instruction matters, the daily habits matter, and add up for a kid, so.
That's right. Absolutely. So, Come to Win, count on me every day, is what we're asking students. Can we count on you every day? Come to Win is our attendance focus for our students and families. What we've been emphasizing is for families to monitor, to register in Power School, log in, follow along the journey, so that you can provide the level of support that students need. But a lot of that comes from the education, just understanding briefly what I shared in the previous slide, and the impact overall. And so, updates, we will provide that every 20 days to match the state's 20-day count. We know that attendance impacts our funding, and so, while we're not relegating and, you know, dwindling our students down to a dollar, we also understand this is where our funding comes from as well. And so, the categories to win, and we have our champions, they maintain a 96% to 100% attendance rate. Winners are 91% to 95%, and then our participants have at least 90%. And here's what that really looks like, because it matters when you, what am I, right? And where am I, and how am I doing? So, when you log in on September 1st, which is the first 20-day count, you'll be able to see Marie Fagans is a champion, and Come to Win, and then it's telling you, you know, to, students who are champions have greater than 95% attendance. You can see this when you log into Power School. You always know your status there. When you get your report cards, your progress reports, in addition to the updates that we made when I first started, which lets you know on that left-hand side what your reading level is, so that we're being very honest there. You have an A in English, but however, you know, as it concerns testing, this is where they say you are right now, so that we understand the true gaps that we have. The top right-hand corner will now add where the student is attendance-wise, if they're falling in one of these three categories. And so, this is to allow students and families to be very clear, you know, where they are as we think about emphasizing, count on me every day to win as it concerns attendance. I'm not seeing the slide that is most beneficial, so if we can add it in at the end, please, that would be great. That demonstrates the number of days with the particular count day that was the most important. But I will move to our central office champs. In addition to attendance and understanding the impact of the same, we also understand the impact of mentorship, and what it means to have someone in addition to your family to really root for you, to really to provide that extra level and layer of support. I do believe that leaders go first, and so, I've called on and have asked for central office leaders to step up and to mentor one to three students. I'll keep my 10, which is what it originally was, of mentoring students. We have emphasized here, our middle grades, we're losing a lot of our rising sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students, and so, that will be the initial focus here. That will allow us to address, if you will, and support about 13,000 students immediately if we have all 4,000 central office employees to take on this particular charge. And so, we're prioritizing our students. We have a full year's plan, if you will, something each month happening. We'll start it first, and then we'll stretch it out and expand it to the community to join in, as we have a lot of interest there from all of our huddles, our barbershop talks, people really want to get involved and become mentors, and so, we'll start it out the first month or two, and then we'll expand it to the community to get involved. I do want to emphasize on the Come to Win. It's broken down by Commissioner. I believe everybody is, has a little competitive spirit in there, and so, the dashboard that we have breaks it down by Commissioner as well, so you can see by group. You can provide the emphasis utilizing your social, your communications individual to talk directly to your constituents about how your district is performing, where they are. You'll be able to see all of that, and I'll show you that in one of our individual huddles. EduLog, as we think about safety, we also know it is psychological for sure, as we think about mental health and mental well-being, but it is also physical. And so, to add a layer of safety and security to calm the minds of our parents as they entrust us with their students most of the day, if not the majority of it. EduLog, transportation app, we look forward to rolling that out across the district to allow an app to be handy for our students and families to log in. They can see where the bus is, what time it's expected to arrive, if it's going to be late. We will roll this out to ensure that it can hold the capacity of the district and ensure any types of adjustments that need to be made with the company, that they can be made. But we look forward to providing this as an added measure to our families and caregivers as we protect our most precious cargo. I see you. This includes any routes that we run, and so, that's our early routes, our traditional routes, that's our activity bus routes, whenever a child is on a bus. Yes, ma'am. Great question. Upcoming events, you have something?
Is there a cost to the transportation app?
The transportation app does, no, this does not have a cost, because it's already connected to our GPS systems on our buses. It is already through our current platforms for the district, so it does not have an additional cost.
Great, thanks.
Yes. Upcoming events, to get the central office, all employees across the district, every employee that works with Memphis Shelby County Schools, we look forward to hosting Legacy Night, Auto Zone Park. This is after you go vote. I am an advocate for and proponent of voting, so please make sure you exercise that, and if you miss this to-go-vote, please miss this to-vote. So, it is Thursday, August 1st, at Auto Zone Park. We have Eddie B., who is a teacher and comedian. We have some artists here that I look forward to hearing for the first time. We have some school bands, cheer squads. Looking forward to having just a good night as we get ready to take on some very heavy work in a very heavy year. We're thankful for our sponsor, Tennessee Valley Authority, for taking this on for us, and we're able to provide this at no cost for all of our employees. Preparing the Legacy School Supply giveaway is August 3rd. We're thankful here for Mr. Bain, our very own Memphis Grizzly, for sponsoring this and being a part of making this happen at the Memphis Sports and Events Center. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Love?
Are you going to have each school participate in the Legacy Night?
Yes, we've invited all schools. You're talking about in terms of performing?
Performing.
I'll have to see who's actually performing. They don't like to really share those with me, but I can get it for you. They like to just surprise. Is there a request?
All districts need to be included.
All districts will be represented, but in terms of who it is, I don't know that.
Yeah.
Do you want to know exactly who, though?
No.
Okay, great.
But District 3 needs to be included, just as well as all of them.
Now, Commissioner Love, have we excluded anyone? No, you can't say that, but I hear you, though, very loud and clearly. Very, very intentional about ensuring that all of our students are represented for sure, but certainly all of our board commissioners and all of our districts and constituents are represented. Is that fair? Okay, great. In addition to this, meet the new principal. As I shared, we do have 100%, all of our schools have a principal, and we have several new principals. And so, this is online. It's important to be able to meet the leader of your space, and so, please go out, meet the leader who is responsible immediately for your child or children. You can see that on the screen here. Grab a picture, screenshot. But this is broken down by elementary, middle, and K-8, K-9 in some spaces, and then our high school areas. And so, congratulations to these principals. I'm thankful, yeah. I do want to emphasize here, we do have a great combination of new and very seasoned principals. There are some principals on here who have done work at central office, and I will underscore them, because they took on my challenge, our call to, hey, will you take this on in this season of the work? Because we know that you can lead the school where it needs to be, understanding they can operate from any space in the district. And so, as you see some familiar names there, I am especially thankful for them for saying, yes, you can trust me to do this work at our schools. And so, congratulations to all of them. We were able to get some external candidates as well, who want to be a part of Memphis Shelby County Schools and do some great work. There's that slide. And so, the slide for Come to Win here is exactly how we plan to follow it. This will be broken down by school as well as by student, and so, this would be an example of a student, but it would have their actual dates, I mean, their actual numbers of absences, if they have any on that far right-hand side. And so, you can see on September 1st, we've already marked it out, the 20 days, every 20 days, and so, you see the dates. There's no guessing here for a family to know what date is, day 40 or day 100, and then where is my child? Are they a champion? Are they a winner? Are they a participant? And you'll be able to follow along there. I implemented this in a previous space to take the guessing part out of it, to be very, very clear with students and families, to be able to monitor it. It's easy to forget if you were absent September 1st, you know, well in March. And so, to be able to monitor that, you can see it here, there will be gifts and incentives and things of that nature, but we're really working to establish a culture of showing up, right, and being present. As we know, we have to do that in the working world as adults, but also, it's okay to make it fun as well. As we work to strengthen the level of engagement in our classrooms, as our students have been very transparent, that school is boring to them, and so, we are working on that as well, because that also contributes to attendance, while we also give attention to bullying and intimidation and all the things that can serve to impact a student choosing to attend or not to attend school. And so, this is our effort, and we are knowing that we can count on all of our students, count on me every day to win. And so, we look forward to rolling this out officially. That concludes my report.
I have a question. Before you got appointed to the superintendent role, I bought up Macya Walker and Robert R. Church. That school has five apartment buildings, walking distance from the school. And I had a conversation with the school board and the employees on getting a bus for that school. The teachers and the principals told me, attendance is low. When it rains, cold, they have to walk, cross over five lanes of traffic to get to school every day. And if you would be so kind to expound on that at the next board meeting.
Consider it done.
Commissioner Calvo?
Yeah, thank you. A lot of kudos, great stuff, good communication, so, from the transportation app to the Legacy Night. You know, we've been talking about branding, and that looks really, really good, but I know there is also substance behind that, so I want to commend you for that. Just, I agree with you on the tangible rewards. Like, I mean, we're humans, and people like to have that. From, I remember last year, my son was like, I cannot be late, because if I miss that, I'll have to take the end-of-the-year exam, so whatever. I mean, people are people, like, we all get paid, like, that matters, right? I do have, one question is about, it's from the first slide, on the Summer Academy, and we don't have to go into a lot of details, but I'm curious to see, what was the thing that helped most students succeed? Whether it was the transportation, you know, when we talk about the students who actually attended, what worked, what didn't work? And again, we don't have all those details now. I'm just, as a lesson learned for the future. But the two other big things that I have for you is the enrollment, the enrollment and the HR. So, on the enrollment side, I was, I'm curious to see how we are, like, this year, this week, this week, this week compared to this week last year, right? So, and it makes sense what you said, maybe it's just the way we message to people, that all you have to do is just, like, really updating. Because I think when people said, oh, I had to register, I don't have my list, I don't have my, I don't have this, I don't have that, it just kind of creates maybe a bigger problem than what it is, that if people just knew that they just have to go in, and it will take literally a few minutes. So, again, I'm curious about enrollment, how do you feel about that? Please don't tell me that you were already. I know, but it's important to know where we are. And HR, I've been getting calls from constituents in District 5 who said, hey, I apply for position and nobody calls me back. Like, I understand that sometimes people just apply for a job and they don't qualify or whatever, and I'm careful not to vouch for anybody, but I'm, it's more about, you know, I'm curious to see, how are we doing with people that were still trying to get in here, and we have the capacity in HR to, you know, to address those applications? So, that was a very long statement, but thank you. And you were taking notes. Thanks.
Got it. I have it all right here. So, I think when you ask about Summer Learning Academy, what worked, you know, how do we, what happened here, right? And what did we glean from it? So, the governor did visit as well, and students transparently shared without being prompted, like, they were just excited to be there. They wanted to be there to learn. They were intrigued and very invested in the text that they were reading. They could provide, you know, what was happening, you know, in the story. Students were, I think, in terms of having seen, you know, hundreds of classrooms, students really wanted to be present, but also, our staff wanted to be present as well. I didn't feel like we had to force anybody to be there. They really understood, you know, the magnitude of the work that was taking place and what was being carried out. I will say, I think transportation always helps, and so, we provided that. That's always helpful. I think what's more interesting for me, and the reason I always shared out, and it's not on the screen anymore, the way that I shared out, the way that I do, is yes, we had, you know, 4,276 enrolled, but we were missing several, right? They didn't actually attend, and so, the gap is what happened to those students and where were they? But overall, Summer Learning and Summer School, both very, you know, positive experiences for our students and our staff. Looking forward to receiving additional feedback as we round out and close out the makeup dates and officially close out Summer School. So, I appreciate you lifting that question there. In terms of enrollment, where we're seated, I don't think it's been done previously, but I did have the team to roll every student over. It just did not make sense to me why we would ask Marie Fagans' folks to keep enrolling her every year, even if she's changing schools, that's a transfer, not, you need to start over and register and enroll again. What we are asking families to do is Marie Fagans, Ms. Sonia Fagans, and Daryl Fagans, please come and update your information. Either our phone calls aren't working, or your address may have changed, and generally speaking, if you lack immunizations or anything like that, then that's the opportunity to do that. But I don't want families to think that when you show up, your child's name is not in the system. In high school, I don't want them to believe that when you show up, they don't have a schedule. We make schedules for every student, and so, those are available. But we do need you to get your device and make sure that is ready, right? Return it to the school that issued it, if you're going somewhere else, and just make some general touches with your school to ensure that you can, you're ready day one. And when I say ready day one, I mean that you go to class and you can learn on day one, we can teach on day one. We're not taking care of logistics like this. And so, thank you for that clarity as well, as we emphasize that for our families. And then, HR in terms of offers, several individuals have emailed me as well, and so, I do receive those. I think there is a bit of backlog, as we wanted to ensure that no one's check was missed, compensation-wise, for the individuals who are impacted, and so, we were able to do that. Everyone has been paid on time, benefits are still intact. And so ensuring that the focus was devoted there, the team did get a little behind. In addition to that, the 400-plus offers that we've made added on to it as well. And so we have a team, they're really working hard, sitting in rooms, hammering it out as we also think about where we don't need as many people as well. And so we are saying, okay, close instructional coaches, we don't need any more of those, we need teachers in the classroom. And so it's a both and in terms of where we are.
Commissioner Garcia, Love and Williams.
Thank you for the, sorry, I'm losing my voice. Excuse me. I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the comprehensive report and what you, some of these things are not new, but it is good to see out in presentation and for the public here. For the summer school numbers, the average daily attendance of that 4,554, is that an increase or is, how is that from previous years in terms of daily attendance? Is it up or down? And do we know why? Yes.
The average daily attendance for summer school?
Yes.
Is that up? Okay, I generally ask for it, I apologize, I can't recall, but I asked for it already. If I recall correctly, it is a slight increase, but I'll make sure we get the accurate numbers.
Do we allow parents, you know, that may have something planned of going to grandma's house for a week so they don't enroll in summer school because they, they're going to miss a week? Do we allow enrollment in select weeks of summer school?
So I think what you're asking is what I share with the team in terms of how we expand summer school and summer learning for next year is to stretch this out, to provide different opportunities. Right now, it is just happening in one, you know, concrete moment in time.
Yep.
But flexibility to allow vacations, but also to still attend summer.
Yep.
We've offered in previous spaces, a morning and an afternoon, so there are a lot of different ways to do it.
And then my second question was around the school readiness surveys. This is, this is really helpful. Have principals communicated any resources they need to be able to get to fours across the board on these that we can be?
Time.
Just time?
Yeah, so we had them in Leadership Institute last week, committed to them to leave everybody alone for the most part, except for teachers. Commissioner Williams, they will be pulled during in-service week to go over curriculum and all the expectations for our literacy focus and things of that nature. But generally speaking, during in-service week, we've left the schools alone to ensure that we're ready and then all next week as well, so they can really get to work on some of these areas.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see, thank you for the information, but I didn't see you touch on truancy.
Tell me specifically.
Shelby County Schools has a lot of children who don't come to school year in and year out. What are you doing about that?
So remember that truancy goes along with attendance. And so if we get students to school, we automatically decrease our truancy. So remember, truancy, they've missed consecutive days and haven't provided the excuse. And so we have the truancy liaison. I see you want to add another?
I am talking about the students that they don't come to school year in and year out.
Oh, just at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's not truant. We would have to really talk about families because it is required by law, age of six to 17 to be in school. So we're talking about something totally different there that's not truant, that we would have to involve legal involvement there.
And kids are missing 35 to 45 days and no one can contact them.
So a few things go into that. Remember, we emphasize contact information being updated because that's a barrier for us to be able to reach a student and/or a family. But generally speaking, when you're reaching that number of days, that's when law has to be involved. And so I'm not sure that we've done that, you know, consistently in the past, but we do, without focusing on being punitive and punishing individuals, once you've reached that particular bar, we do have to involve law and we do plan to do that this year. And we do have policy being brought before the board to review how we strengthen the policy in that same way.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we're going to have the various kinds of soup schools to the highest performing schools. We're going to codify them that way. Will they all share the same curriculum?
Yes, sir. No, everyone, we will have a commitment to the curriculum across the district. And remember, we're doing that in combination with our curriculum audit, if you will, where everyone will have the opportunity to observe, give feedback about what we're doing across the district curriculum and instruction-wise in partnership with the Council of Grade City Schools, but so that we don't stop the learning. Remember, we're just getting back to basics, reading and writing every day, every class and every campus. And then we have a sharp literacy focus of which our teachers have been generally exposed to and will really go in deeper during the in-service week, which will be led by Dr. Myricle.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
With students in the soup schools, and I think those are the ones who would be identified as the lowest performing schools, do they have the opportunity to move to another level of a school?
Those are our highest opportunity schools, where the greatest level of work is necessary in soup schools. They do have the opportunity. I think we anticipate receiving this year's grade letters maybe October or November. As soon as you move from the state designated letter of D or F, you move to ignite and/or soar. It is not to hold any school in soup schools. The goal here, a very ambitious one, is that we don't have soup schools.
So potentially students could be very transient?
Not students, just schools. So students are still in their same school.
I have 500 students in my school. If 50 of them advance to soup to the top of the lab, they get to leave the building?
Oh, no, 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 no. So the students don't move, Commissioner Williams.
Okay.
Only the schools. So the schools, soup schools are just the schools.
Oh, so the school has to move as a whole?
There you go. The school as a whole.
So if you get half of them to improve and half do not, what happens?
That we could be making some moves. Remember, it's based on how the state, you know, calculates it. So we're looking at the bottom 25%. There's several different areas and components and we look forward to rolling that out so that we track it the same way throughout the year, so that we will know a little more in advance, to the degree possible, where we will land and it's not a surprise. But the schools move, so ABC School has the opportunity to no longer be a soup school, meaning have that grade letter of D or F, they could move to a C. They could certainly move to an A or B depending on the level of work and then they would no longer be a soup school, the school itself.
So you will not be moving students?
That is absolutely correct. No students. Great question. We'll emphasize here that we have a total enrollment kindergarten of 4,196. So 4,196 students, as we think about emphasizing early childhood enrollment and focus there from our pre-K, our own pre-K schools, as we think about expanding the number of classrooms that we have, 81% of our students from pre-K transitioned and continue to choose Memphis Shelby County Schools for kindergarten. So we look forward to strengthening our programs there and increasing that transition rate as well.
I just want to go on record saying the grading system that the state mandated us is very subjective.
Just, just one comment. Great presentation tonight. I want to go back to something that Commissioner Calvo touched on. I mean, these last few Sundays as we are on this campaign trail, I think in every church that I visited, there was a line afterwards to talk to me about HR concerns. And I just want to be clear, when we find ourselves in a predicament where we don't have enough people to do the job, it is okay to have to bring people back or to hire people to get the job done because we're getting emails as well about people expressing, calling, no one answering, calling, not getting clear answers, people calling and saying, I don't know what I'm supposed to do on the first day of school. So I trust and pray that we'll have all of this resolved.
Yes, I do want to emphasize that we are looking for teachers in the classroom. And unfortunately, people are not interested in being in the classroom. And so when it comes to deciding if I need a manager of virtual schools versus an ELA teacher at Westside Elementary, I'm looking for the teacher for Westside Elementary. And so the response, individuals will receive responses, but it may not be to bring you back to a central office position, which is what several of the inquiries have been about. And so I want to just share that transparently. It is not in a disrespectful way, but the emphasis and the priority is the emphasis and the priority. We still have nearly 200 vacancies. We'll have more than that if the team can accelerate moving people through the process and onboarding. But we have a need and the need is not going away. And so, you know, respectfully, I get it. I understand that individuals have a desire to serve at the central office level. That's just not where the need is and I've been sharing that and we're still sharing that. But in terms of communication, that's not an excuse for a response not being provided. So I want to emphasize that those responses will be provided by the team. And I do receive a daily report in terms of the inquiries that are sent to the general talent management inbox, but I have received additional emails that don't go there and I have spoken with those leaders as well.
Really briefly on that point, how do you feel about, you mentioned that you have spoken with Commissioner Reynolds and others. Do you feel, I mean, obviously this is not a Memphis problem.
Sure.
So I'm hearing, they're probably here across the state. Is there any advocacy connections lobbying that we can do to help get that moving? Or you feel pretty confident that they will say, yeah, go ahead and hire people without kind of a waiver, I would call it?
Yeah, so in speaking with the commissioner, you know, it is, she has partnered us with her assistant commissioner to really think through how we can get this done. The general consensus is that we need to get it done. Yes, I did emphasize and I opened up my advocacy that I understand that nationally this is, you know, a problem. And I certainly understand that in the state it is a problem, but when we're talking about the second or the largest district in the state, then the problem is exacerbated, right? So when we think about nearly 100 vacancies in special education or exceptional education alone, that is not being experienced, you know, in most spaces. And so the exception that I've asked for, I think is one that is very valid, one that is doable, but one that they are, you know, having conversations about with their executive teams, both of our state board members that represent us, as well as the commissioner and her team. So looking forward to receiving that. I did ask for an exception for the students that were receiving from the ASD, those who were supposed to be retained. That is not something I felt that the district should have to communicate to those families when those families did not have the opportunity to attend summer learning academy as, you know, required. And so I did ask for that exception as well, so that we are not retaining students in that regard. So really leaning on, I think that certainly board commissioners yourselves, you've been already advocating for this and so continuing to have the conversations in your networks is quite supportive.
I have a question. Who is over HR? Who is over HR?
So talent management sits with your favorite, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Tito Langston. Executive Director is Ms. LaShonda Brooks. And so we have moved a few key folks around and sharpened some of our areas to have a Director of Recruitment and Advancement, to have a focus on benefits and compensation. And so during the board business meeting next week, I'll share out our organization chart so that you can see it fully.
Send those emails to Tito, we will.
Tito, you are taking over the district.
And Ms. Knighton is serving as our business financial officer until and/or unless we fill that position otherwise.
So you'll introduce us to them too. You'll have them here so we can make sure we meet.
Commissioner Love opened this up, but it's supposed to be next week and so you'll see folks, you'll see org chart. And then moving on, every month, the org chart is public and will be updated so no one is wondering who's who and what's what.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Williams, you have a question?
It's about transparency, not about all the changes. It's just about transparency.
I do know that stability plays a great role in educating a child.
That is.
The more, the fewer people they see, the better off they are.
You are absolutely correct.
Thank you. We are now on to the agenda of staff action items. The first item on the agenda is 9.1.
Take my sip later. Board commissioners, we're recommending that the board adopts the approval of the following charter applications, Memphis Grizzly Preparatory Steam School for Girls. And we're recommending, and remember, this is where we get a little, we're recommending that we adopt the denial of Wooddale Middle School and Journey Northeast Academy. So again, we're recommending that we adopt the approval of the Memphis Grizzlies Preparatory Steam School for Girls and we recommend the, we adopt the denial of the charter applications for Wooddale Middle School and Journey Northeast Academy.
9.2 contract approval YMCA of Memphis and the Mid-South. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just would like to have a little clarity on just the recommendation, the why behind the recommendations that were placed for, for the denials, not, not the Grizzlies one, but specifically like, just kind of just see where the district's mindset is with those two schools being denied?
Yeah, so in general, is the rubric on here included in here? So we did include it, but just for general context, taking a look at the rubric that is used for all applications, certainly the applications fell a bit shy in terms of meeting the needs of students. We looked at enrollment, we looked at in terms of quality and sometimes that subjective, but taking a look at the quality of service that's being provided, the requests that are being made or the considerations that the organizations are requesting in terms of expansion and the actual opportunity to be able to meet those needs. And so as we think about the district's landscape and how we serve kids in general, looking at our charter schools is no different. And so the, these recommendations align with that, not this particular rubric. It is highlighted specifically in your documents though, and I know you had a chance to look at it, but for the public, we provided that as well, so that you can see the specific rubric that is used, how it's rated and ranked and the feedback that is given and certainly the window we're in, in terms of the 60 days that are given to appeal.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who is over charter schools?
Charter schools, Innovative Schools falls with Dr. Roger Richmond. Directly Charter Schools is now overseen by Ms. Arlande Parker. Raise your hand. There you go.
I know her.
Okay, 9.2 contract approval.
This contract is YMCA of Memphis and the Mid-South. We're recommending that the board approves the master services agreement for before and after-care services.
Questions, 9.3 contract approval.
9.3 is contract approval for school health. The recommendation is to approve the purchase order to School Health Corporation in the amount of $117,426. This is for CPR training materials for lifetime wellness and JROTC instructors.
No light. 9.4 contract approval.
This is for first aid, education services, wraparound and instructional coaching support. Recommendation here is to approve the contract in the amount not to exceed $9 million here for this particular school year, 2024, 2025. This amount does include $6.8 million for general class services, another $1.8 million for wraparound services, and then $350,000 for instructional coaching services. And again, this is for our preschool services for nearly 1,000 pre-K students.
Commissioner Love?
I would be interested in seeing the data on this.
Specifically enrollment data or?
Um, everything.
The impact of the instructional coaching and all?
Yeah.
That makes two of us.
My next Tuesday?
My next one?
By Friday?
Whenever you need it. You want it tonight?
Yeah.
Got it.
Print it off.
I know, you hard copies. Yes, ma'am.
It'll be deliberate. Thank you, Ms. Love. 9.5 contract approval.
This is for early college collaboration with Shelby County Schools and Middle College, High School and Christian Brothers University. The recommendation here is to approve the early college collaboration between the two entities, if you will. This is to continue our partnership, providing access to early college for our middle high, middle college students. Through this collaboration, you can see the data there, we have about a 96% graduation rate in 2024. We have about a 96% graduation rate in 2020, 2021. We're maintaining that in the 2022, 23 school year. Looking forward to seeing the data from this year. Our ready grad rates, we have improved since 2021 to the 2023, 24 school year with 86.5% now. And then just looking at performance across our end-of-course exams, certainly some areas there that we can strengthen, but across the board, I think generally speaking, students who participate and have access to college-level courses do fare well.
Commissioner Garcia and Woods.
Is this meeting the demand for college-level courses in the district?
Having it restrict, I won't say restricted, but having it at middle college or just across the board?
Are there more students within Memphis Shelby County Schools who would like to take college-level courses than this particular contract provides?
The opportunity to advance early middle college or early college opportunities absolutely exists across the district.
Thanks.
That's my, along the line of my comments, Dr. Fagan, which is great pockets of success, great partners, great collegiate partners. The downside of this is that more kids needing that access. I know you share that, that as well. Also, it'd be great for the board to have data on how many kids are getting college courses and where they're located. So as we look at our district's specific reports, how many kids are in District Four are, are able to, are taking college credits and, and getting, be it dual enrollment or whatever those advantages are, I think it would be good for board members just to have a line of sight of like, oh, this is, just really is in District Four as opposed to District Three, so we can be able to target those additional resources during budget season.
Absolutely. I think we broke that down as well. I'll bring it back, though, as we pick up our reports, by our CTE numbers also. We have that by Board Commissioner.
I think Commissioner Williams asked me a question around LeMourne Orin College as we look at partnerships, and I know we have a, a school on that campus.
Holoset Price.
Holoset, do they do dual enrollment with LeMourne?
Well, we, we're in conversations with the president, Dr. Fagans. We've had, we're all over it.
New president, I know he's going to be doing some innovative things over there. Shout out to Dr. Davis. All right. Commissioner, did you have a question, McKissick? Did you have a question?
No, I was just responding to you about LeMourne.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. 9.6, contract renewal.
For RCM Technologies, the recommendation here is contract renewal with RCM Technologies, estimated amount of $2.1 million. This will provide 30 registered nurses and then two registered nurse field liaisons for nursing services for this upcoming school year. Just to go back to the initial question, Commissioner Williams, I think you had, how many nurses did that, that other contract? We have 18, so I wanted to just make sure I provided that response for you. So this particular contract, though, is to provide 30 registered nurses. 9.7 is the Comprehensive Medical Staff, Delta T Group, Medical Edge Recruitment, Real Nurses LLC, Suwannee Medical Personnel, JK Medical Staffing, 24/7 Med Staff, Therapy Staff LLC, and Worldwide Travel Staffing LTD. Those are the numerous vendors that we need to use in order to meet the needs that we have here. So the recommendation is to approve the contract renewal request for those respective entities, and this is for our student wellness in the Office of Education Services at an estimated cost of about 1.7 million. And certainly, this is to provide our registered nurses, LPNs, to provide the services in the event of absences and vacancies in the district, and certainly as we work to see what this would look like if we were able to offer internally, Commissioner Williams.
Okay, and that was 9.16 and 9.7. Questions from Commissioner Garcia and Love?
You partially answered the question that this would fill vacancies and absences, but say, taking the RCM Technologies, for example, with the 30 registered nurses, will that, one, will they be contracted employees or will they become Memphis Shelby County School employees?
So these are contracted employees at this time, as we work to see what that could look like if we were able to offer full-time opportunities. Some of these are part-time, but all of these are contracted for sure.
So in, in the contract that we don't see, the technical, does it allow us, I know some contracts you can't offer their employees and undercut them, but are we allowed to make them a job offer?
So that compete clause, I think is what you're talking about, non-compete clause? Very familiar with that. No. So that there's no misunderstanding, no.
Okay. The, so just the experience of, of someone working in a school, they, would we think of them as like floaters throughout the district, or I'm going to be an RCM Technology nurse who's just assigned to this particular caseload for the year?
Yeah, great question. Look forward to showing you our massive assignment list of how we thought about, you know, ensuring that the resources are spread out across the district the way that they need to be. And so nurses is one of those areas, and how we've thought about it is to ensure that a nurse, although their home base or their base school may be ABC School, they support the general schools in the surrounding areas as well. And so they may be at the base school for three days but float to the other schools two days out of the week, and we did that based on what students' needs are in the respective schools.
Yeah, and I think, I'm thinking just about students being able to have a familiar face too, so whether that's one day a week or whatever it is, so that's helpful.
Yes.
All right, we're good. 9.8?
I have a question.
Oh, Love?
Um, the nurses in the schools, they're going to have a private room?
Do they have a private room? So all nurses are required to have, I don't want to say by law, but you're required to have a confidential space, a safe space, a secure space, so yes.
9.8.
9.8, Instructure. We're recommending here the approval of the contract in the amount of $736,748. Instructure is our platform that supports our digital content and also provides access to professional development for our teachers and staff. And additional to that, for virtual supports or for our online learning, it also meets that need as well. This is the second-year renewal option under the RFP, and we have one additional option to renew, and we'll look very closely at that before bringing it back. On the Instructure? Okay. I'll check that out.
Commissioner Love?
I want to ask you, what did you do with Clever? Clever?
Specifically speaking?
Is it in the system?
Oh, yeah. So Clever comes along, is a part of the Microsoft suite, and so you just have a one-stop login, you have all access to all things, so I didn't do anything with Clever, it's still here.
Because the, I received some complaints that you did away with them.
I'm sure you've, I'm sure I've done a lot of things that I have not done, but I generally learn about it like this, and so nothing has happened to Clever. You can still access the same way that it was accessible, what we are trying to do, and maybe this is a better narrative, is you can do more through Clever, and so that is what I've asked of the team, is to ensure that the access through Clever is where you can see most of these platforms that we keep paying for, that you have access to that through Clever.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
9.10, contract approval, First Eight.
9.10, First Eight Memphis Community Partners, recommending the board approve the contract with First Eight in the amount of $400,000 to continue managing the full implementation of our services for our four-year-old children and their families in a total of four community partner programs. Those partners are Hope House, Cadazle, Red Robin, serving 80 students, and the recommendation is aligned with a mandate by the Tennessee Department of Education to ensure high-quality pre-K programs across the state.
9.11, adoption.
This is a ByBoard Cooperative Master Agreements adoption. We're recommending the adoption of this cooperative agreement for five consecutive one-year periods, adhering to the term of each master agreement, and this is for the purchase of a variety of goods, products, and services. And so several suppliers enter into these agreements through our competitive solicitations process. This allows us to utilize them as a participating public agency or a PPA. This is a part of our procurement process, so that we're not doing this each time that we have to do business. We have this master agreement to pull from multiple suppliers.
Commissioner Woods?
I just want to, first of all, this is a great, great thing to do, and I think ByBoard, the cooperative agreement is an opportunity for us definitely to be able to piggyback and take advantage of those who've already done the work. And I know I'm speaking to the choir, but I just want to encourage Mr. Langston and the great team that he has, that we don't miss out on the opportunity to still look to do, you know, competitive bidding here, to make sure that even if they've already done the work, that we can be aggressive and, and be more competitive. And sometimes there's, you know, there may be a vendor out there that may not have taken advantage of that, but that we may just want to be able to, to procure those services here locally as well. But it definitely, hopefully make your life a little easier, and I think is a smart move. So thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
When we want to procure goods or services, what is the, and I know this is likely a policy question that I'm asking here, but what is the process for determining whether you go out for a competitive bid or go somewhere like ByBoard? I know there are, are certain qualifications, but are there particular services where this is, is, is most utilized?
Yeah, so we'll give that to you in writing so that you can have it clearly, don't want to muddy, you know, the language and the specific process, but yes, you are correct in general.
What type of services do we usually?
It ranges.
Okay.
And Superintendent Fagans, I think it's a good time too for us to shout out Joyce Douglas and team for the awesome event that they had the other Thursday, as Commissioner Woods was talking about, doing business with the people in Memphis. We had a large number of vendors to come out to get more information, to learn about the process and the steps. So shout out to Joyce Douglas and that team for such an awesome event.
Absolutely. The Opportunity Conference, more than, I think, 160 folks were there, lifted much of what you shared there, you know, supportive of the district, but how do we strengthen our process to allow more opportunities for smaller businesses, if you will, to do great work as well? And so committed to that, and several have followed up directly.
Well, even Superintendent, I know this is not overly shouting out, but I do think that if a tree falls in the forest, no one hears it, right? So you have started to share with board members every solicitation, every bid, which is new for us, and so we didn't get to take that out to constituencies, potential vendors, and let them know as well of opportunities to do business with the district. So that is a, a new opportunity for board members to be a part of cascading that message as well. So thank you.
9.12.
The recommendation here for Sourcewell Cooperative Master Agreements is to adopt this agreement for five consecutive one-year periods, adhering to the term of each master agreement for the purchase of a variety of goods, products, and services, and the same, this is equivalent to the previous one, that will allow us to streamline our process for more efficiency.
And I think 9.13 is a different company, but pretty much that same master cooperative agreement.
That is correct. So 9.13, same thing for TIPS, allows us to streamline our processes for procurement and, and move a bit more effectively, if you will, throughout the system as we think about the, the, the number of services that we have and the process that is required for each one. 9.14. Frontline Technologies Group LLC Asset Management Software. The recommendation here is to approve the piggyback agreement with Frontline Technologies in the amount of $184,623. This is for the renewal of our software maintenance and technical support for the asset management software.
9.15, and I have a question on this. I'm going to let you start, and you can help me understand it.
Okay. This is Heal 901, Enhancing School Capacity. This is a grant, and so we're requesting the approval for the contract renewal and the expenditure to Heal, Healing Memphis DVA Heal 901. They're doing business as Healing 901, in the amount of $138,240. This is the first renewal option of the two additional one-year terms to renew, provided in the RFP. This vendor provides professional services for enhancing school capacity around youth violence, really more prevention and preventative measures, if you will, per the guidelines of enhancing school capacity to address youth violence grant. Then the following schools receive the services right now, Raleigh-Egypt Middle School, Raleigh-Egypt High School, and Sherwood Middle School. This particular capacity is an evidence-based collaborative, allows us to increase safety in these five high-need Memphis Shelby County Schools, preventing and reducing school violence.
Okay, and I think my question is probably to Chief Langston. I know we have in the past the Heal the Hood, right? That's a different one, but I knew at one point that was the only one, but we still will be able to come back with an amendment around that? Because I think they may have services, it was different schools I'm, I'm asking. It's one of my questions where we did the budget was around amendments, and I know I looked at that one, and I noticed that we had a new one, so I wanted to wait to ask that question.
Chair Green, great question. So specifically with this one, this is an enhancing school capacity grant, but if you look through the documents, you'll notice we, we actually did an RFP for this, and this vendor was the winning vendor for these five schools. So as it relates to this particular RFP, these schools, this vendor would service these five schools. So if there are another set of schools to do outside of these five, then we can do another act of solicitation, and then whoever, whatever vendor wants to participate can.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Love and Coleman?
Last year, this vendor didn't get started till many months down the line. What is the start date for this school year?
Start of school, August 5th?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Coleman?
I'm confused. This is saying three schools, you're saying five. Which one is it? Raleigh-Egypt Middle, Raleigh-Egypt High, and Sherwood Middle? It's only three?
It's only three. My apologies, I saw five here. It's only three schools, my apologies.
And Superintendent Fagans, how were these three schools chosen? What were the, what was the criteria for these three?
It is a general review of, of the types of incidents that are, that happen in the school, when we think about violence and what qualifies in the community as well, so extending and thinking about the general vicinity of the schools. So not always just in the school, but also the communities and what's happening connected to the schools. So given that consideration, I think there is an opportunity to expand, given the viability of the program as well. It could get to five, and that five might be true, but right now it's three, and it was based on that, and this is a part of the, a grant.
I know she was thinking about Miro's because I was thinking too, and about all the violence that's been going on in the community around there that's on the news almost every day, and I was just wondering how.
That was my next question.
Right.
This contract was approved within the previous administration.
This was before.
But we can add your schools?
Oh, that's what I was, okay, I noticed they were kind of sort of in District Three. I just wanted to say that, Kevin.
No, Sherwood Middle is not in District Three.
Ms. Coleman, we will go back and, Chief Langston will be looking at ways to get the five, since he said five on record, I mean, I mean, that's what he said. Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes, ma'am. I think the conversation lifts up that the board has an appetite for additional youth violence prevention programs, and so if there is an opportunity in our budget for putting out a competitive bid, so we're not talking about three or five, we're talking about 50, then that actually might be what is needed. So if, if we could see some options, both that criteria spelled out and what expansion could look like, do we have any idea of who could provide these services locally or nationally? I think a, a great education is the best prevention, but some intentional programming and more in three or five schools. and more than three or five schools, I would love to see some options.
So as we think about services, you know, it is important to measure, you know, effectiveness as well. And I look forward to seeing the outcomes here because we do have a lot of folks who want to support. But what that looks like in terms of being viable and effective, you know, remains to be seen. As quantitatively, one, but certainly as the vast in general, as a professional school counselor, how do I take, you know, credit for a student graduating when I know that there are several people contributing to that student? It's the same that goes for this. And so our metrics here, and we wrote, I did write this in the feedback for the team, in terms of monitoring it, how do we know if this is effective? Will a student say that Heal 901 was the reason that, you know? And so we look forward to seeing that. Then we can, you know, move forward in terms of expansion.
And I know our Director of Partnerships, Dr. Phillips, is also thinking expansively about what it means to share the effectiveness of our partnership. So I think this is an example of that. I'm in support of monitoring and then bringing results, but just as a topic, I think we're eager to see those results as we get that baseline of what it could be contributing to. And then also, sometimes I want discrete measures, but it's sometimes if students are saying, hey, I just felt safer here, that might be enough for me, right? So I do want to hear some of the things that staff and kids are saying too about being part of the programs. Thanks.
Commissioner Coleman?
Let's implement some of the programs that you want, the mentoring programs, the after-school programs, so that we don't have to have a conversation about our young people and violence. That should be, it's far away from A to Z.
That's correct.
So let's work on implementing more of those things in our district, in our schools. The Sherwood Middle, Melrose Mentoring Together.
That's right.
The Raleigh-Egypt Middle, Ms. Love is not in here, but till I said it, Raleigh-Egypt Middle and Raleigh-Egypt High Mentoring Together.
That's correct.
To alleviate some of the violence that we have in our district.
Yes. I want to be very careful that we don't address and think of all of our students as criminals, as offenders, as young leaders who are out destroying the community and the city. And so I'm very cognizant of that and very intentional about how I see young leaders, specifically young leaders who look like me, and I'm very cognizant of that in this seat and the types of programs and initiatives that we put forward. And so while I honor that we have challenges, not just in Memphis, in the city, across the United States, we have the opportunity to do better and be better. I do not want for us to be the model that says that violence is how we have to address our students, but mentorship will get us there. Come to Win will get us there. Being more visible as people will get us there, providing more quality programs and pathways that will get us there. And so it's a very delicate balance as we certainly honor the reality that we're living in, but also honoring that there's a very creative and innovative way and also substantive ways that work to get us there as well. And so we are incredibly confident in what Come to Win will do, just based on what our students have already shared, and incredibly confident about what our mentorship will do because that's exactly what they ask for as well. And so looking forward to all of it working together certainly to bring us the types of results and outcomes that we're looking for.
Thank you. I'm absolutely excited about nine point 16.
Treadwell Auditorium Renovation. The recommendation here is to approve the contract to A and B construction in the amount of $938,000 for this particular auditorium renovation project. This is to refurbish and renovate the auditorium well past its life and it is quite unsafe for students. And so we're looking forward to certainly getting this. This renovations include the seating, LED lighting and controls, windows, ceiling tiles, paint, stage curtains, carpeting, and a sound system.
Woo! Treadwell Eagles.
We'll have to find something on the facilities tour, different, or this will be our before and after.
Yes.
Yes, we all took a tour of various schools and it was pretty rough at Treadwell and that auditorium.
The same seats I was staying as a child, Michelle. It was pretty rough.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, here we go. New beginnings.
Thank you. Gracias, Michelle Stewart. Thank you so much. You cried with me. grateful for your work. Commissioner Woods?
Appreciate the work, guys. Madam Superintendent, I think, and it may be in this pile of paper, but we used to get this document, and I'm sure now that Mr. Langston leading this work, we'll start getting them again. But green, yellow, red, facilities document, clear indicators, monthly on how we're doing, what projects. If there's any scope creep, timeline changes, costs creeps, we see it monthly. So I'm just signaling under this bold new leadership that board starts to see those documents again, very powerful documents. And it kind of keeps everybody, I know everybody looks and see what's going on in Stephanie's district, which is where the buck of our dollars go, no, I'm just joking. But it is a great way, colleagues, for us to see monthly where the spending is happening. And then when things slow down, right, what we measure matters, right? So we want to be able to see that on an ongoing basis. So we'd love to see that back before, at my last meeting, please.
That is correct. You will see it at your last meeting, actually, as we've gotten on the other side of a budget approval and we're able to spend some money. So certainly we are there and we did provide the first copy to Board Member Love as you bring that up, so she does have it for her district. But we do have that information across the board. I look forward to providing that next meeting.
It's a new school out east, right? I mean, you talking, but I mean.
What school?
Germantown, New East High.
Oh, that's in Mr. Cabo's district now. They even took a school from him. Wow.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
You got a mean run. Come on.
Just love you, Mr. Woods. I'm gonna miss you. Just text me during the meetings and keep me laughing. Nine point 17, contract amendment.
The recommendation here is to approve window replacement contract amendment to A and B construction in the amount of $29,760. This increases the total contract here by $29,760, up from the $1.57 million. This new contract total is now $1.6 million and extends the contract completion date to September 30th. This allows the timeframe to address the unforeseen conditions identified during the construction and complete the window replacement project. So addition, in short, there were 12 affected rooms that will not operate if the new windows are not installed correctly and those were identified during the process.
Commissioner Coleman?
They were identified during the initial process?
They were identified after the work began. I am keeping myself together here. After the work already started, these additional windows were identified. And so go back to amend the contract to allow the work to take place on the 12 additional windows that were missed somehow during the initial observation.
We had people walking through this building, looking at the windows, and 12, 12 windows were missed. And I know this was before you. I'm not blaming you. But it's like, we throw money at the window too often unnecessarily on our buildings. If we have people that are doing walkthroughs to see that the work is starting somewhere in the process, they should walk again. I'm just giving you my two cents because $29,000, that could buy a lot of something for our children. That we've got to do a better job because it's like, we're not paying attention. We're not making sure that these buildings are taken care of as they're doing the work. And again, this was before your time, but I would hope that we can correct this and we don't have to come back with amendments unless it's an emergency situation that, you know, can't be prevented. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Nine point 18.
Grant approval for RISE's USDE Grant Acceptance, recommending that we accept the grant award from the U.S. Department of Energy, renew America's school program in the amount of $9.5 million for the Riverview RISEs project.
Set it, yes, okay. Nine point 19, contract approval?
CSM Consultants, we're recommending the, to approve the contract to CSM Consultants in the amount of $76,000 to advise and help the district on regulatory changes, updated policies, procedures, and processes related to services for basic conduit access to the Internet and broadband internal connections applications. This is for the Federal Communications Commission E-Rate filings with the Schools and Library Division.
Nine point 20, contract renewal?
This is for VMware Renewal. Recommending to approve the purchase to CDW Government in the amount of $249,297 and the master service agreement to provide licensing and support for the internal servers, which are located inside the district's data center.
Nine point 21.
Recommending that the board authorize the purchase of insurance coverage through our broker, Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services. This is in the amount of $4.7 million for property and terrorism coverage for $4.1 million. And then for law enforcement liability coverage of $213,270 and student athletic accident coverage of $155,493.
Commissioner Woods?
Madam Superintendent, I'm assuming that this is an increase from previous years?
For the liability coverage?
Particularly for the terrorism coverage as well. Yes. I don't remember, nine point 21. Is this recurring at the same amount or have we increased the, because risks have increased? Ms. Burgess?
For memory, for the terrorism, the terrorism is staying the same.
Turn your mic on, Ms. Burgess. Okay, speak in it. Okay.
Okay. My understanding from what I can recall, the terrorism is staying the same. The difference is we have purchased cyber coverage and that was purchased. Cyber risk coverage was purchased in December of 2024. So that's the difference.
December 23?
Twenty, 23, I'm sorry.
Okay, so a few months ago?
Last year.
All right. It's just always great when, you know, you guys hear the board and you act. So I just want to call that to our attention that as we saw this past Friday, as you guys probably know, friends who may still be at the airport, that, you know, we count on technology and there are bad actors out there. And so I appreciate you making the investment to deal with that in the, hopefully unlikely event. And take a little bit of that and buy us a new mic also for that. You seem to be having some challenge. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
That is also in progress. We will have new microphones.
Nine point 22.
School Transitions, Achievement School Districts returning, Achievement School District Schools returning to Memphis Shelby County Schools, recommending to approve the school exit plans for the transition of the following schools back to Memphis Shelby County Schools, and that's the Florida-Kansas and Caldwell-Guthrie campuses. Of course, we did and have converted proudly Caldwell-Guthrie to a STEAM Academy, transitioning it to pre-K through eight to expand the services that we're able to provide in the community. And Dr. Renfro will lead that school and all the excitement is surrounding it so far. And so we're looking, we're looking forward to that.
Nine point 23.
This. I think she has a question.
Oh, I just had a quick comment. I asked some questions about the new school and I just want to thank you for all the information that you provided. And I want to thank Commissioner McKissick for all her leadership in making sure that her students and families had the best option. And just, I'm excited to see how, excited everyone is and I appreciate your leadership and sharing with the board. So, thank you.
Well, I'll take that. Thank you. No, we had a great community meeting. Dr. Fagin's and Dr. Renfro and so many wonderful of the members of the staff of MSCS, the community meeting that we had about a week or so ago, week and a half ago, and great turnout, really, really wonderful turnout. And they're very thankful because they were impacted by their ASC schools being taken away at the very last minute. And so with MSCS stepping in to make things happen, so a lot of wonderful, happy community members. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Nine point 24, I don't have it on my sheet too.
Okay. VPK, nine point 23, VPK Community Partners. The recommendation here is to approve the contract and award to Future Leaders Learning Center for one classroom. This is a total of $100,000. Horn Lake for one classroom in the amount of $100,000. Lambs and Ivy for one classroom in the amount of $100,000. Memphis Business Academy for five classrooms in the amount of $500,000. La Petite Academy for two classrooms in the amount of $200,000. Schools of Peria for two classrooms in the amount of $200,000. Sensational Enlightenment for one classroom in the amount of $100,000. Riverdale Kitty Learning Center for two classrooms in the amount of $200,000. This recommendation is aligned with the mandate by the Tennessee Department of Education to provide high-quality pre-K programs across the state.
Commissioner Love?
I have a question about voluntary pre-K. Do the district decide who is going to get voluntary pre-K or the state?
In terms of which students or which businesses?
I have a lot of principals in my district. They are complaining because they don't have, the funding follows the child. How can I say this? They have a lot of students not qualifying for the program because they are, make too much money. Voluntary pre-K does no income allowance.
So your question is who makes that decision?
Yeah.
Is it the district or is it the state?
Yeah.
Well?
Commissioner Love, thank you, Superintendent Fagin. The state determines the eligibility criteria. We just have to follow it. We follow the federal poverty guidelines and as you know, the federal government outlines what's the income max. The state allows us to go over to 180% over the federal poverty guidelines. Head Start is 185 and First Eight gives us the 400% over income.
But the principals are complaining in my district. They turn away a lot of kids who don't, who make too much money.
Yes, ma'am.
We have something to do with that?
No, ma'am. The funding sources, which is the state for voluntary pre-K, Head Start, which is the federal government, and First Eight, there's an eligibility criteria that those students must meet in order to receive the services.
But we can add those classrooms in my district.
We have classes in your district, but the eligibility criteria for the income determines the placement. So although a parent may apply, if there is a VPK classroom in that school building, they must meet the federal mandate, which is the poverty guidelines that are outlined in the scope of services. So we cannot place a child that is over the threshold that is set by the state and the federal government.
Universal pre-K?
We do not have universal pre-K.
Universal pre-K would allow everybody.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We need to go for that.
Well, we do have the district's funded classrooms, which allows us a little bit more flexibility to add those over-income families. So where we have a high need, we do try to make sure that we place a Fund One classroom in that building.
Fund One. That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, ma'am. So we do have Fund One classes will give us the most diversity, but we place the Fund One classes where there is a high demand. And so Cordova, Raleigh are our high-demand areas is where we have majority of our Fund One classes. There is some in Frazier. We do have a couple in Frazier.
I am not talking about Frazier, not specifically. I am talking about Raleigh.
Yes, ma'am. We do have classes. We have Fund One classes in most of our schools in Raleigh. in Raleigh.
Get me that list.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Calvo?
Super quickly, Madam Superintendent, so I thought the federal guideline was like a preference or priority, but if nobody filled that seat, then we could give it to, to the next person.
Even if the child is over income, if we fill that child that is over income in that seat, it's like having a empty seat. They are not counted. They must meet the eligibility criteria in order for us to serve those children.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. I think overall, Board Commissioners, what you're lifting is what I've already lifted to the team, is to figure it out. Um, and so what does it cost us? How do we expand access? How do we get the students who are on a waitlist, who don't meet the criteria? How do we not punish families for making too much money according to a state guideline? How do we serve our students? And so I look forward to that plan and I look forward to sharing it with you about how we expand, uh, the number of classes that we offer across the district, uh, as we consider early childhood education being the foundation and, and, and fundamental to how we move forward.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ms. Love raised some valid points and I, I think, um, Board Member Calvo kind of hinted at where I was going in the conversation. I don't think, uh, even if no revenue is generated, I think it does no one a, a service if you are having, if you're funding a teacher, you're paying for brick and mortar, uh, and there are empty seats and there are people who need, uh, that education. And so even if no revenue is generated, uh, our answer to them should be, let's make it work and let's find out what the bare minimum overhead is that we would charge that, no different than in airline industry, right? Like you're, you know, flying a plane with nobody in it, it does, does no one any good. And so I think we, we got a bunch of smart people and no new, uh, you know, no new problems under the sun. I think collectively we can solve for this and, uh, we should be able to report back to this body that if there is a demand, then we don't have any classrooms with empty seats.
Thank you. Nine point twenty-four.
It's the contract approval of Head Start Community Partners, recommending for the Board to approve the contract and award to Head Start Community Partners, twenty-one classrooms at one hundred thousand dollars per classroom. Childcare Partners classrooms total contract amount is two point one million dollars. I won't read these, they're, they're much of the same. There are a few additional ones here, First Baptist Broad, Broad and Gateway, YMCA Memphis and Mid-South has three classrooms, but generally speaking, most of these are the same as the original to, or the first one. To add these particular classrooms or to offer these services, this is aligned with a Head Start grant application to ensure high-quality pre-K programs, uh, across Shelby County. This contract is in the final year, I will add that of a three-year agreement.
Shout out to Dr., uh, Director Gordon, outstanding job that she does, uh, around these services. I've always enjoyed the conferences and just learning how we can continue to expand. So we look forward to, uh, earlier we got our students in school, they'll be reading and we won't have to talk about a third grade retention, so we will continue to find ways to make sure that we are on top of those investments.
Nine point twenty-five.
I have a question. Um, picking back off of what Ateya Green said, um, we need to find a way to get the schools connected with pre-K and, uh, um, elementary school. There is a disconnect with pre-K and the elementary school.
Can you say just a little bit more, Board Member Love?
Pre-K acts as if it stands along from the elementary school. All kids are going to the kind, uh, kindergarten classes. They need a direct line to the schools.
Oh, gosh. I think the emphasis here, if I understand correctly, and thank you Chair for, for some of the context, is perhaps because the...
Attendance.
Because the attendance is not considered important, uh, in pre-K.
Is.
But it is, absolutely. Considered is what I'm sharing, uh, that maybe the attention that is necessary, uh, is not given. Uh, what I have shared as, as the expectation though, uh, is that attendance across the Board matters, even my consideration for not staggering initially the kindergarten because I did not want it to impact, uh, our attendance, uh, but after getting the clarity, we will stagger. But I'm sharing that generally the expectation for attendance is not age, you know, specific, uh, it is not exclusionary, it is across the district for all of our students in every building. Is that hopeful? Is that where you're leaning towards?
No.
Not really? Well, uh, feel free to elaborate.
Um, I will do it in the next meeting.
Okay.
Your last one? Twenty-five, we're not sure what twenty-five is. Community Partners?
This is the U of M Contract Schools.
Oh, okay.
So this is, uh, bringing to the Board, uh, recommendation to approve this particular termination of the existing master agreement between the Board and U of M for university schools.
Commissioner Garcia?
Is there any direct, there's no fiscal impact, all dollars associated were passed through?
Is there any direct financial impact? Uh, what we're doing is cutting clear here, no impact on either side, uh, for either entity.
Will we continue a relationship with U of M as they build their innovative school district on any partnerships, will we explore partnerships with them at all?
So I did have the opportunity to, to speak with Dr. Hargrave, we haven't met yet, uh, but we'll have some conversations about what that could look like.
Thank you.
We are now on to Board Items, ten point one, uh, Proposed Policies, first reading. Waited so patiently, thank you.
Good afternoon.
I may have to just pass you, Dr. Richmond, got you?
We have, um, five policies that we will be presenting for the Board's consideration this month. The first policy is Policy Number Two Zero Zero Six, Purchasing Authority. On page five of your document, that will begin the, um, proposed revisions to the policy. Read page five. So the proposed revisions to the policy will allow the district to, number one, purchase gasoline in bulk. This is in alignment with a recently enacted law. The next revision to this policy is on red page five, and, um, moving forward, we are asking that prior approval from the Superintendent or the Superintendent's Designee be required for the acquisition of information technology. The next policy is Policy Number Twenty Thirteen, Professional Service Contracts.
Madam Chair, can we ask questions? Uh, you want, what do you, how do you want us to, to, to deal with this? Dispose of them as we go, ask questions or?
Nice.
Can we go policy by policy?
That's fine.
All right. So, uh, obviously just like any other policy committee meeting, the rationale, you gave the one on gasoline, rationale for Superintendent, um, approval on IT acquisition.
That's just to align with the Superintendent's direction that all contracts should be approved by the Superintendent, but that's not disregarding the previous approval requirements like going through your manager, director, but she wants it to come up to the Superintendent for approval.
So no other, um, procurement process changes except for the Superintendent has final say, in, in, based on this current recommendation?
Superintendent or Designee.
Okay. Continue.
The next policy is Policy Twenty Thirteen, Professional Service Contracts. Um, we are recommending revisions to this policy on red page eight of your document. We're stating that prior written approval of the Superintendent or Designee will be required for all professional service contracts. On page nine, red page nine, same rationale as before.
Uh, I just want to publicly state, Madam Superintendent, uh, you know, you, uh, you hire a rock star team and you, uh, so part of that is empowering them to, to hopefully be able to be trusted partners and make decisions. I would just caution us that if you start talking about professional service contracts, five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, that it could create quite a bottleneck for you. So as you, I do want you to have the flexibility, um, to, uh, if, if, assuming that the Board approved that policy, I understand they want to have early oversight until we get, uh, proper cadence, but I also want her to be a rock star Superintendent that's not having to manage a bunch of, uh, POs. And so I just want to call that to our attention, uh, you know, when we hire a great Superintendent, I just want to make sure that you get that time back once you get a cadence of saying, okay, anything above X, I'm okay with you guys, go ahead and, and doing that without me having, without having to wait. So bottlenecks and you spending your full days signing off on hundred-dollar POs. Want to respond?
I definitely don't sign off on one hundred-dollar POs.
All right, because it said all, it said all.
I do sign.
So go from seventy-five thousand to zero, to one dollar.
Contracts, um, that I think the Board would appreciate why I do that and certainly can share, you know, multiple examples offline.
Absolutely.
But I definitely, I hear you.
I'm a hundred percent there with you and have seen some of those examples and, uh, but I do want you to be able, if, in the event that, you know, you can count on your team to deliver on that, to be able to bring that, those changes back as well.
And just for the sake of clarity, um, just as the Superintendent just stated, this does not include purchase orders, it's only for...
Just contracts, not POs.
It's only for contracts. And the language states Superintendent or Designee, so we would not have to bring the policy back before the Board if the Superintendent chooses to appoint a Designee.
Clarity, purchase orders, contracts. How would you define the difference?
So a purchase order is necessary not to be condescending, but to make a purchase. Uh, contracts are literally like these massive items that we're assigning. It enters the district in a binding agreement and those generally should not be entered into on behalf of the district for, by anyone other than the Superintendent, and it's always after legal review, it's after multiple reviews, but certainly after legal review. Uh, purchase orders generally just going to buy supplies and things of that nature, I never even see them.
So...
I just look at them on the expenditures list.
So if we were spending fifty thousand dollars in products, we'd type, we probably would have a purch, we'd probably have a contract typically associated with that purchase?
If we're spending, you mean fifty thousand in like one place?
So anything over thirty-five hundred dollars would require a contract?
Thirty-five hundred is the first...
Anything over thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, would be a contract, that's what I'm saying.
No, would require a, a review, a, a look.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Same policy, page nine, red page nine of the document. We've added language stating that prior approval of the Board for any Board-initiated contract will be required, and that can be accomplished, um, through a resolution. Next policy, policy, Policy Number Forty Fifty-nine, overtime. Red page twelve of your document, we're proposing language clarifying that paid leave including but not limited to vacation, sick and holiday pay does not apply towards overtime. We've also added additional proposed language requiring approval of the Superintendent or Designee prior to an employee being able to work any overtime. We also state that employees who work overtime without permission, without the required permission, um, or approval may be subject to disciplinary action.
Yeah, several lights, Commissioner Garcia, Love and Coleman.
What problem are we solving with this change? Was overtime in, an issue?
To be transparent, we have an abuse of, of overtime. We have individuals who are submitting requests, uh, or have not submitted requests, but have been, uh, paid and compensated, uh, for time not worked. Uh, we have, uh, generally speaking, uh, million dollars that we're, 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 we're paying, uh, to individuals that we cannot qualify or quantify, uh, what is being done and generally speaking, the outcomes for the respective areas in terms of the departments and teams, uh, we needed to strengthen what that work looks like, so while I cannot deny payment, uh, we can on the other side start to follow a process that leads to, up to termination, and so that is the fair balance. And so I think that we've implemented the form that requires pre-approval of it so that it is clear why the request is being done for facilities or whatever that case may be, uh, but to simply show up, say you performed work, get paid and we not know about it and we continue to, um, have that expenditure at such a high rate, I think that's an, a, a waste of, of, of funds.
No, absolutely, this...
Yes.
Sounds like the exact time you amend your policy. Uh, I, I find it surprising that this is the first time I've heard that figure of a million dollars in overtime that we could, that just, uh, before we get to a policy amendment, it would be nice to know that that is a, a challenge we're trying to solve and I don't, I don't know, I think even just thinking about, um, as we make decisions about where staff capacity needs to be when we think about budgeting, so, um, I am glad that we are, are putting a formal plan in place to curtail this, so thank you.
And just to echo that, I mean, I, I'm thankful that this has been brought to light. I mean, we've had previous administrations and this is, this is a serious problem that clearly has been going on for quite some time, so I'm glad that it's been brought to our attention as a Board and that you're addressing it, um, through policy, because policy is what, what we have to follow. That's what's concrete, that's what's in black and white, and so, uh, thank you for illuminating this.
Um, thank you to my Board Members who spoke before me, but I don't want the people to, uh, abandon their jobs for working when it's, um, say for example, the work starts at nine o'clock. Eight hours before nine is, um, eight hours after nine is five o'clock. People work after five o'clock, doing things for the district. I don't want there to be a discrepancy in their pay because of this policy.
So I think as, as underscored, they receive pay. I mean, I, I can't not pay you, right? And I had this conversation with Councilor surrounding the same things. What it is though, you know that we are trying to clear asbestos in a building, you, you can get that pre-approved, you know these things. We know athletic games well in advance, there's a schedule for that, that is not an emergency, but there are emergency circumstances, uh, that come up and those are allowable and they have been. Uh, but generally speaking, uh, every day you know what your schedule is, you know what you have to work on and it's pretty clearly defined when you may need additional time, and this is for hourly salary workers don't receive overtime.
I am talking about the, uh, the Board Members' Office.
They're salaried. Yes, ma'am. For that very reason, because they can be with you. Yes, ma'am. There's a lot of work to be done in the Executive Services or the Board Office, uh, those individuals are salaried. Um, yes.
But it's the work compensating their salary.
Are you, are you asking is their salary aligned with their work?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was getting ready to ask the exact same question, but my concern was, and I'll just say for example, if they work nine to five and they sitting here tonight at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in a Board meeting, how is that justifiable? What do we do in that situation? Is that something you approve or did we look at that on the front end? I understand that.
So like, Mr. Langs, everyone out in this, these two rows here are salaried, we're here tonight, we don't get any extra money. Um, that's, that's law, that's not, uh, a district, that's not Memphis Shelby County Schools. If you are hourly, then yes, but the individuals that are salaried, you do not qualify for overtime. That's something that teachers across the nation have been saying, hey, we work well beyond, you know, a school time, uh, and we have never been able to be compensated as teachers, uh, for overtime because we are salaried.
I, I will say, I mean, just for, for, maybe for committee meeting or something, uh, I, I think it's important to know the difference between salary exempt and salary not exempt. Teachers might be a different thing, but that might be a different conversation, but, uh, there is, there's such a thing as salary exempt and non-exempt, just want to bring that up for future consideration. I'm not talking about any specific employee, I'm just talking the law in general.
And I just want to also clarify, in the current rules and regs, approval has... And I just want to also clarify, in the current rules and regs, approval has always been required. It was just in the rules and regs and it stopped at the manager and above level. It was never at the superintendent level. So once we, now that we are asking for the superintendent to approve any overtime, that's now policy language. So we're shifting what would have been in the rules and regs over to the policy and including the superintendent for approval.
And Madam Superintendent, again, I think it's been said a number of times, putting these type of controls in place, be it with contracts, be it with overtime abuse, I think these are all great things to have happen. My question around implementation of the policy, because I also don't want to have our superintendent being neglect of policy because we put a burden on her and these controls now rest solely with her. So I saw the language that says designee. Can you talk through policymaker as far as implementation? What does that look like effective after the passing of this policy? I want to get overtime and the superintendent indicated, is it like a two weeks in advance, a week in advance? Is it, can it be retroactive? Like what does it look like from an implementation standpoint? With now the superintendent having to be the final say.
From a policy perspective, I'm not the one to answer that question. It would probably go to the superintendent.
And that's fine, I appreciate you passing buck on that. But as you design policy, I'm hoping as you type, you're thinking about what the work looks like as well. And so sure, the superintendent can answer that question, but somebody's going to have to do this. So just curious on what that looks like superintendent. I know you don't get much sleep because I read that, but I'm curious on what does this implementation?
Not because I'm superintendent though, that's just something, that's a work in progress in my life. But in terms of, like any sharp system and procedure that is implemented, once it is implemented and it established the cadence and the flow and the rhythm, it flows fine. So it's a natural part of the day. As I shared earlier, Coach Green here knows if she has to stay late on, you know, July 25th, getting that in before July 25th is not a problem. Generally speaking, there are emergency cases and purposes and we've had a few of those circumstances. They're honored. But I'm talking about the heavier opportunities here to really get some controls around that are necessary as we look at expenses, expenditures. This is for overtime, we can have a conversation about food, I've been there. And so this is not about me as superintendent, but it is about being fiscally responsible with the dollars that we have. Absolutely.
Yeah, it is very difficult for me to believe that you don't think that teachers work overtime. Because they do work overtime. I know you did, you said they are salaried, but they certainly stay longer than 7.5 hours a day. So they are not paid for that time. They have PTA meetings at night and they sponsor all kinds of activities. So I think that maybe we should consider, there should be some consideration since they do, they are required. And I heard something in this thing saying that you can be punished if you don't do it the right, the right way or something. There would be some consequences, I think she read, for whoever works overtime and it is not approved. I guess that's what you meant.
That's correct.
In the writing. So I guess that has to be preapproved by whomever that is. But my concern is that I know that we won't be paid because many, all professional people are salaried in this building, even those who are here tonight working late. But is there not any money that they can earn for working past 7.5 hours?
Now, Commissioner Williams, you know I'm a teacher.
I know I am too.
Who worked all day and all 12 months as a nine-month teacher and never received additional pay unless it was for coaching in terms of stipends. And so that's where our stipends come in. That's where we work to try to provide any additional opportunities for teachers and anyone that qualifies to have leadership roles that come along with an additional stipend. That's the way we're able to provide additional compensation on top of salaries. But in, you know, in general, you know, that we know, we all know that teachers work longer than eight hours a day and certainly more than five days a week.
Well, they are the low, probably the lowest paid and probably, and we all want to, could not get overtime, I guess, too. That's what it sounds like, they make the least and they cannot get overtime because they are salaried.
I said a quick note on page 13. We say superintendent, but don't include designee, but we do on page 12. So just making sure that there is another per. You can have a designee.
Got it. Oh no, I got it. Okay, are you ready to move forward? Okay, the next policy is 6014, Attendance and Excuses. If you go to page, read page 14 of your document. We are proposing a change in the title to Student Attendance and Truancy Policy, Excused and Unexcused Absences. In essence, what we're doing is striking the current attendance and excuse policy, revamping it a little bit and including the language from the truancy policy. So on red page 19, we've provided definitions for chronic absenteeism as well as for truancy. We're also laying out the board's expectation for students to comply with the state's compulsory attendance requirements. We're proposing language that requires the superintendent to implement procedures to monitor student attendance and to use attendance data to identify students with attendance issues as well as to provide early interventions and support to those students. Additional proposed language states that teachers must record student attendance daily using the district's student information management system. That is a requirement that's based on state law. On page 20, proposed language supports the superintendent's expectation for the district to provide timely and regular communication to our parents, legal guardians regarding attendance matters. Also, excused absences are recognized, are outlined as either recognized by the state or by the board on page 20. On page 21, we clarify that late arrivals and early dismissals resulting in a student missing more than 50% of the school day is considered as an absence. That's also based on state law. Excused tardies and/or early dismissals from the class period will be monitored and appropriate interventions provided in accordance with guidelines established by the superintendent or designee. Any questions on that policy?
This is a excellent policy, but all school personnel is going to get briefed on this policy when it passes.
Are you waiting for me? The answer is yes.
Yes, we're meeting with the principals to cover this policy once it's passed.
All school personnel is going to get briefed on this policy. Anybody that handles truancy and attendance is going to get briefed on this policy.
Absolutely.
Because the reason I said that, because there was several people saying several different things last school year. And none of it was in policy.
I, my question is the difference between, I'm looking at page 19, flipping between 27, what was crossed out? Because between the ages of six and 17, certainly I know why we're not, 18-year-olds are considered adults. It's probably why the law does not apply. But it is, our kindergartners are five, so we don't count truancy for five-year-olds?
We pull this language directly from the law.
So the state law and tendency is ages six to 17.
So are we still tracking five-year-old truancy? No.
So I think that's what, remember Love was partially lifting, why the emphasis and the general significance, if you will, the disconnect between the grade levels, the importance, the level of importance, right? So we emphasize attendance across the board. We track it across the board, but in terms of requiring it by state law, those ages, six to 17 is what we can hold people accountable for.
Sure, I think if we're going to build a habit of being in school on time every day, even if we say here are six to 17-year-olds, truancy data, here's our opportunity with our kindergarten or our five-year-olds across the, I would still want to be aware of what that, I think we should still message, even if it's not, there's no penalty for it, it doesn't have to be included in the data. I just think the awareness of how our kindergartners are showing up is helpful. But maybe it's not in, maybe it's not for the policy, just as a desire to see. Are we on track? I'm sorry, who are you? Okay, so they've, if five-year-olds have been enrolled more than six weeks, it does apply to them. Okay, that is helpful, thank you.
She's going to come and say it in the mic, because some people couldn't hear her, and introduce her wonderful self.
Maria, are you reading the attendance piece or the truancy piece? I know we're combining them, but you're reading the compulsory.
So if a student is five and they have been enrolled for six weeks in kindergarten, then yes, we do track that.
Okay, that's extremely helpful, thank you.
I had a response to regarding the tardies and early dismissals, just how we're going to address that as a district. Because as you know, people have doctor's appointments, especially if you have orthodontic appointments, that those are constantly ongoing for some time. So it says it'll be as an absent, if you're, if you're checking out or more than half the day, can you just add more clarity to that? And then also, how can we help set families up for success? For us to think about that as a district in terms of offering guidance on when to try to schedule these appointments? Because it can be a nightmare trying to get them doctor's appointments, dental appointments, things of that nature.
The 50 cent, the 50% requirement is based on the state. That's nothing that the district just operatively came up with.
Yeah, she's just asking, how do we plan to support that, right? And so part of it is, as we're doing now, is just the education around it, the information. And so, you know, what I would generally share to my students and families as a principal is, you know, if you're going to make the appointment at eight, just make sure you're here by and then provide that time to arrive by so that you can be counted for the half day. Or if you're going to check out, don't, you know, wait until 11:00 AM or whatever that particular half-day mark is. So the same way we're being clear at the 20 days, that's the same way we need to be clear. If you're in 7:15 start time, then this is what a half, a half-day looks like, right? And so that's how we support that.
Right, that's all I'm saying, I think that'd be great. Thank you, I did understand how it was laid out, but just families really just don't know. They don't know all these rules and regs, that's why we have an expert who's been at this for many, many years to break it down for us, but for families. And I say this from personal experience, having been on the bad list once with my kindergartner because she was sweet in kindergarten and so she got sick. And so I didn't realize the level of impact, but you know, she's okay academically. But nonetheless, you just don't know if you don't know. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate some language that's in the proposed document. We state that communication with, between the school district and parents will be regular and often. And that includes the gamut, not just about a student being absent from school, but about the importance of attendance, about state requirements and et cetera.
So that was the, that was the last policy?
The last policy is the truancy policy.
All right, I'll wait.
Okay, we're asking to repeal the next policy, truancy, because it's incorporated into this policy that we're talking about now.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Sounds like great work's happening in the policy office, as always has been. Future cadence around policy engagement, without, will committee meetings happen? Or will work session be how you want to flush this and engage in this manner here? So you'll get the policies. If you've got any other thoughts or recommendations, email that to either you and or superintendent for any suggested changes.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for that. I do want to just go ahead and state out loud, same as I've mentioned to you as well as the superintendent, is that additional policies where we may currently be silent on, one being when we create new departments or when we are giving salary increases above a certain threshold. It's, I do find it ironic that the public expect us to have controls in place when it's, when it's time to have reduction in force or when people are being overpaid, yet we have no line of sight when you receive those increases, right? And so I think we must have policies in place for the board to have some say. If there is a wild increase in salary, then the board must have line of sight of that. If there is new departments that requires additional headcount, the board, in addition to the one time where we're approving a 400-page budget book, you have an opportunity to engage us on a regular basis so we can be informed. So when we're being tasked to make tough decisions, we've done that with transparency and due diligence. So Madam Superintendent, you quickly expressed an openness and support for bringing those type of policies so the board can be more educated on where we're spending our dollars. So I appreciate you for doing so.
Absolutely.
Can we go back for one second? With the last two policies that we discussed, the attendance policy and the truancy policy, in order to make sure that we have those policies in place and ready for the opening of the school year, we will be asking for suspension of the rules next week, but only for those two policies. Thank you.
Let me remind my colleagues, your principals and teachers would like to eat next week for in-service and hopefully you've taken care of those allocations. But if not, you have until next week, there being no further business. Let's have a great evening.
I thought you were going to take care of me. I thought you were going to take care of me.